Farmers market?
It's that eggplant, but I'm not sure if it's a different one or in so for you.
I think, I think it's different.
Oh, I see.
Kind of fielding repairs. You can trade land, you sign on the office.
I remember the, uh, the chair.
What's that? What I do?
Message boards.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
Hello, are you sad? Good seeing you.
Oh, yeah, you've changed so much. I think I'm a little bit hobbling around.
Well, you can have a question.
Is he here today?
No, no.
Great.
Good to see you.
So it's good to be seen. Are you behaving?
Johnson.
Excellent. Good to see you.
They thought for your.
Good to see you.
My lady, I'm sorry, we went over to the store earlier. The lady over there thought he was my son.
Yeah. There's a lot.
I said, no, he's not my son.
I swear I know where he's from. She knew me.
She's the co-host.
But the other pieces are missing and we found them or we tried to retrieve them or we were.
Hey, you got some trees down in the entrance.
What's that?
You got some small trees broken, stashed.
I scanned.
Yeah.
So we're like, we're not.
Get an extra agenda.
They were on the table.
Where?
On the podium.
I thought it'd be a piece of.
As you did.
Be not square. Hold it, be not square. Get, get it fit. Let's see, so. Yeah, but it, it went down. So alarmed.
I was like getting out.
Nice.
But having a school.
I just think about anybody.
I was gonna tell him, he wasn't there. But it is.
You got a lot of ability, might be.
Right across the three of you. That'd be awesome.
Use some new memories.
We get together a lot once. And so we want to try to see what's coming, but it's very bad.
No, very.
So I guess. Yeah. Well, I didn't. Here you go. Oh, I got his airport. Oh. Oh, you need. So you think today? Yeah. Full work, you feel? Yeah, I thought you were back early. Injury and. Oh, my. Fracture. You know, yeah. Oh, my God.
That can't even make.
Nice vacation. A little different than the council.
Wear freedom.
You have like, says there's a line, a red line on.
Um, it just, it doesn't know. It looks like that town.
Yeah, they're not legalized at all.
Well, they, they, we know.
I just want to know this. Yeah. That's all we can. She, uh, from the. Earth. Oh, that's what someone did. Not anymore.
I was just like a. I really, you're right. Like so red.
Not hidden.
You never know.
It's not, no.
It's been.
Is that? Is that? That was just a.
The bench should pass the girl that moved past us.
Oh, yeah. I'm like, there's a lot working.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You're right. How is your friendship with those people?
Is he?
Uh, yeah, she made it.
Yeah. I don't.
Doing good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it was like a.
How are you?
One minute, shoot.
Yeah. Yeah. Is it like COVID?
No.
Oh, good. Very cold when you weren't sure what it was.
Yeah.
Oh, that's bad.
So, um. This is kind of going very long. I got some shot there. About seven, but her, but it's RSV.
Yeah.
I would see right there. Especially. Yeah, I got. Yeah, I got.
We usually get our, we usually put orders and we get our feed on. We all repeat their.
Yeah, I got it. Actually, I told you. Like, it has to be a two shot.
Two point two though.
I mean, I'm sorry, oh, come on. Yeah, that's, it's the later the better. Because some people got it obviously, it's like.
I'm actually got a.
You're green.
I got one, 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 one.
Every time, baby.
Yeah.
I'm trying to work for more. I think I would, but I'm doing each. That's what we are like. If there are any one of them, very glad that it's my.
Good to have you. I'm here six, so I'm doing this IT stuff. How you doing? We found this in the office.
Okay. No, move. There you go. Is that gonna work for you? Bringing back your old school.
Yes.
Last thing I wanted to.
Back to student season for me to.
I've been in.
Do whatever. You have to pick the. Yeah, what it is. It wasn't. Brain part kind of. I just find the weather change. But I didn't remember anything. And it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been going around.
Yeah. Why'd you do that?
The intent is that it's a little help. You're throwing down. Drive the best. That's somebody that was destroyed. Yeah. They were very, very. They're. Actually, I do. Oh, yeah. You're.
All right.
He's just saying. Anywhere today.
Do we know Dan Meredith?
I don't know. Maybe this time.
Meredith sent me a message that she'll be unavailable tonight.
Javier. I want to see it. But again, Javier.
Meredith sent me a message that she'll be unavailable tonight. Yeah, she's not feeling well.
Meredith. Hello, Dan. Thank you, Mr. David. Just to hear. Want her to hear it again. You're giving them those. Sir? This is. She could. Would you call that? I'm gonna go wherever you're at. Yeah, I was given that. I was given. But I was surprised that when I was there. I try to keep it best though. That's good. Oh, but I guess I. He wants to know. I've been conscious. Was it a game you are? We're just. It's inspiration. Yeah, I just kind of figured it out. I mean, I think.
I passed. I passed you the other morning and I was like, I don't want to speak. Let me read hers.
I wrote, uh, several. Did you? Saturday.
Yeah. Saturday mornings are probably every time, yeah.
It was buzzing down there Saturday.
It was.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, there was lots.
What was going on?
Well, there was, there was nothing there.
Lots of.
Getting busier every Saturday. I don't know if that might.
That does. What is it? Barbecue that goes up there in front of, uh, brewery? I got. Yeah. Yeah. People coming, getting played up. That's being a good business. Geez.
Low overhead.
One is your town. Okay, well, that's not the block. So let's get started and let's see. John, there's G and D, and just go ahead and get hit right before.
Mr. Mayor, thank you this evening. Council, thank you for allowing me to report out this month on police department activities. As you can see, there were a number of significantly calls for service that you handled this past month. Not all of them, but I just tried to highlight a few. Responded to a, um, record strider in the food line shopping center during the daylight time. So it was about two thirty in the afternoon. And was looking for a black colored Jeep. Was able to identify where the individual was at. Field sobriety tests were done and it's now, uh, finally a front two two in the middle of the day. He was charged with third, second against DUI. And, uh, at court with her, she was. Uh, we also responded, um, to the food line early one morning for a first, a female that said that she had been abducted from the food line. She told us that, uh, she got a ride from. Savannah County to the food line to get a ride back up to her neighbor's house. Said she caught a ride with an individual there at food line and instead of taking her to the shop, so we took her down to the head month there to call her. Here at the real store. In that state. Um, very, as we want to sue charges. For anything that was done, uh, we were able to get our social worker connected with her and. Helpfully, uh, get her some services that way. No charges to link in the file. We've responded to the, um, Scottsville Elementary last month for two separate, different threats against students and staff at the school. Students were, uh, two individuals, students threatening blaming, uh, weapons to school and, uh, hurt staff and other students on the block throughout the school. We also actually had a meeting. Uh, I think it was last week. With, uh, the PPA, staff, parents, alien, the town of county, the Scottville Police Department, the police department with the principal and. And assistant principal later to talk about safety plans, um, those type of things should anything ever happen in that affect the elementary school. Parents seem to be very satisfied with the information that they have been provided. So no charge of these plates on either one of these two members is. We also responded out to, uh, Terrapin Olive Road for a delay. This individual had a history of medical issues, no foul play, was discovered and. Community engagements this past month. Now we participated in the public safety recognition that Scottville Elementary. We were able to have lunch with all of the kids at the school. We had our, um, our local, uh, county's council meeting in September. And we all still talked about the, uh, the state collecting, you know, parents and staff. Auxiliary officers, they donated forty seven hours of their time this past month. And, uh, department knew, uh, we attended an academy, uh, board meeting. All officers have been their, uh, in-service trains for the year. Uh, we've taken possession of our message board and our trailer, uh, took some pictures and just attached. Uh, pictures so you will get an idea of what the message board looks like and also what the boat trailer looks like. We went to, uh, several business places and we were able to climb that trail. At one of our lows. And talked to the management there and told her that we had gotten this ready, how much money we had to spend. And ask her, uh, if she would let go of the, the grant. Funding that we have for it. She said, yep. So we got that trailer for two thousand dollars. Now, cool. So it's being stored, uh, at one of our local shops. The message board is being stored over at the fire department. I've also been working with Lenny. What she's gonna do for us is, uh, the markings on the police cars. Minus the bed, she's gonna paint those markings and put in them. So I can put them. They're gonna be the vinyl. So we'll put the Scottsville Police here on the front of that message board and the backside of it as well. Let's see. We put in for our, uh, VCS, I think the message boards already reimbursed by, um, uh, the eleven thousand dollars that we spent on that. I want me to put into the trailer and the cones. We haven't purchased those yet, but, uh, once I purchase the cones and the quarterings, we'll go ahead and submit the reimbursement for the trailer and the cones as well. Just, we need to get the, uh, pegs and insurance put on the, uh, the two trailers and make sure we have them insured and have pegs on them. We attended a, uh, sexual assault response team committee, committee meeting with our fellow law attorneys this past month. And we actually had, uh, taken possession of our, the new firearms that, uh, we had put in. Purchased, we've got those. Uh, all of our officers have been down to the range and, uh, we did that transition into the, uh, new, uh, sighting system and firearm platform. So. The department should be good in handguns pending any catastrophe through the next ten years or handguns. The handguns cost us, uh, with the buyback program that Glock offers, less than fourteen hundred dollars for five handguns. So it was actually pretty good for us. Um, and we also partnered with the, uh, big police, uh, task force and ACP and we got drug interdiction night down here, um. Number of stops, but no one was arrested for the, uh, but drug violations, battery, anything. So it's pretty productive month. Uh, the stats were attached as well. Everybody can see, we're still handling, uh, just over ninety five percent of the public service in the town. About the town police. Anybody have any questions?
James, you have something for the chamber?
Yeah, mine as well. Um, everybody's already paced this, but I'll just say right here. Um, we're, uh, still continuing our holiday happening, uh, plan, uh, for those who don't know, it's December seventh. And we're meeting up here pretty much bi-weekly on, uh, end mornings. And, uh, my next meeting for anybody that wants to attend is, um, Wednesday, December, uh, October twenty third and, uh, eight thirty in the morning right here. Well, everything seems to be coming along pretty well as far as that event. Um, still maybe looking for, uh, some bands. If, um, the town wants to kick in on some music, that would be our next step. But, um, uh, yeah. Um, we had, uh, this past week, we had our annual dinner upstairs at the, uh, tavern, uh, their new big room up there or newly renovated, I guess I should say. It's been there, but. Um, it's really nice up there. If you haven't been there, um, uh, nice space. And, um, we had about thirty eight people attend that meeting. Um, we got two speakers from the small business development center. Uh, a great resource that I just had no idea was as great as they are. So I think, um, that was very valuable just for folks to. Know that they are out there and, uh, are available and willing to help. Um, then, uh, we moved on to, uh, citizen of the year. And, um, that was something we really made sure we brought back this year. Been, um, out of, uh, routine for the last few years, kind of dropped off to COVID and we had to pick it back up to this year. And so, uh, Jack Maxwell was our, our, uh, winner this year and, uh, had a lot of great, uh, nominations that I've read for him. And, um, anyway, um, he stepped out of the room for a little bit and somebody spilled some vinaigrette on his.
Was it you?
It was not me. I don't blame you. But I signed a new one. I was gonna get, sign that one and then we'll hand it back over to him the night one that's, uh, undressing stain.
I'm sure it wasn't you because I sit right next to you.
You were sitting right next.
Congratulations.
Um, after we gave that, uh, pretty much a grand finale, um, we talked about, we have two new board members that are coming on the board, two stepping down, two. Uh, well, one officially stepping up and one potentially stepping up, I think is coming to our next meeting. And then, um, they will be, uh, appointing our officers after that. I think the good news there is all the same officers from this year will. Willing to stay on their position. So we should have some good consist, consistency there. And, uh, yeah, I think that was about all I had. I miss anything wrong?
I think not. It was a good evening. Yours was really good.
Yeah, I thought the tavern on James knocked it out of the park. I thought, yeah. And, um, you know, we reserved, uh, a certain amount of, uh, meals and they, um, uh, how people couldn't show up for whatever reason, like less than five, but they still only charged us for the people that showed up, even though they.
Yeah, Oldie and her husband were there. And Ward was there. We knew it was there. But it was a good group.
Yeah.
We're the.
Yeah, I think it's only getting stronger and, um, uh, we got a few new members that signed up that name though.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any questions for James? Okay, ARB out.
No.
This month, planning commission, the students.
Stand. Stand. See you.
Oh, this, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hi, ready. Um, I want to take this opportunity to introduce Mark Lucas. He is our new part-time operations manager. And so, out of all things scan, well, now, you know, we pulled up our big girl panties and we're, you know, trying to be a little more. Professional, I guess. And, uh, we were, uh, through a very generous donation, were able to make a hire. And, uh, he's going to handle the whole operation. Do you want to say anything? Tell them.
Eventually I will be handling everything. Once I, once I figure it all out. So.
Yeah, but he comes to you, you're a retired professor. Do you want to do a little?
Um, I live out by, uh, Happy Ferry there since two thousand and eight. I used to work the law firm for seventeen years and I. I like to say I retired. My wife doesn't like that word, but, uh, so, um, you know, I'm looking forward to organizing. This group.
So I think the term is over, qualified a little bit of segments here. Um, as far as scan, we had, uh, most recently a very, very successful teen movie night with collaboration with Boys and Girls Club. We have thirty eight. Uh, kids and five staff members from Boys and Girls. I don't know what the movie was, but they had a good time, popcorn, sodas and, and very well behaved. Uh, the Twilight course is coming up and that's in collaboration with the Scottsville Museum. We've been managing to, uh, get the donations, thank you walkers for the cider. And, uh, we've got things all sort of in line. There will be two Friday and Saturday and then Sunday there's a. For, uh, people that can't do the walking tour, they will actually have a small, short performance downstairs Sunday afternoon. Highlighting the history of Scottsville with the Twilight tour. Uh, we're getting ready for our holiday happening arts market on December seventh. And, um, I'm trying to think, right now they're rehearsing for death trap tickets are now for sale for symmetry players Wednesday, great hall for their performances. And I think the dates are sometime November, but it's, uh, one of their performances tickets are now on sale for that. It's death trap accommodate. Doesn't sound very funny though, does it? Anyway, so they're doing their, uh, and, uh, and we're very excited that the, uh, all of our, we have scheduled. Classes in the afternoons from like four thirty to seven thirty and everyone, Monday through Thursday. And every one of those slots is now filled with something ballet, yoga, drumming, private ballroom, dancing. Not that exciting, I know. I think so too, but, um, and so every one of those small time slots have been, um, taken. For this, uh, quarter. So we're excited about that. You saw the, um, full windows. I won't keep talking about that. That's my personal. I think they'll put that art is for sale. Everybody who wants to support your local artists and I think that that, and, and again. Um, in January, you'll, we'll have a whole new slate of officers. So that's coming up and we're beginning our budgeting and strategic planning. So. If there's something you would like to see scan do, right? Let us know because now we're sending our strategic plan for twenty five, twenty sixth in place. One of Mark's biggest jobs is he's going to find grants for us to write for. And we've already made some progress in that department. So we're very excited about that. Um, and so. That's it. Any questions, any thoughts?
I do have one question.
Yes.
For the Twilight course, are you guys gonna be crossing mayor? You remember how we did? Same spot as last year. East Main. Sort of Berkeley House and we're gonna go to the chicken out base and, uh, one dollar levy to the farmer's market and then we're a crossover to. To Bruce Park, uh, and then back doors. So one, one where we were at last year on Valley at West Main.
One at the.
And then one down East Main at, uh, Canal Basin.
Okay. And you can see the dates and times on our face.
Oh, I've got, I can't tell. I just need to make sure.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thanks for that support. Any other questions or thoughts or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And since we go have any ARB reports, uh, give, or we'll go sort of plan a mission. Let's get that in the next video.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you may recall, the planning commission has been working on comprehensive plan for quite some time. One of the things that the council wanted to convey to the planning commission, which, um, was massive, basically ASAP, we want the. And in the last month, there's been a number of conversations on share to, uh, individual planning commissioners meeting with Lincoln. And as those dialogues have gone back and forth in terms of what we can do to prepare. Uh, there was a very lively planning commission meeting last week and the part of that meeting was. The planning commission, um, one of the members felt pressured by the town council and, uh, that pressure. Was prompted a very interesting conversation and some of it had then to do with what's the right procedure? And as that procedure was talked about, it was somewhat basically decided or reminded that the process is that the planning commission creates a document. Has a public hearing that it comes to town council. That's the procedure for this, this process. And that the planning commission heard loud and clear from the town council, hey, we're gonna make this as fast as possible. We get it done. And the thought is that it will be here in December. There was also, I think one thing I would say, I don't usually talk about this, but. When I got my masters in public administration, I never went on to do what Javier does and. Lincoln does and people who actually use their masters in public administration, but. I, I will remind the council that Lincoln has really been a gift to us and I do think it's true. That the process has taken a lot longer. Some added a thought in here, but, um, at the same time. The process that's going on that he's doing was actually a really quality process. The mayor was also there, Mr. Mayor, and you have some thoughts that you want to share also.
Yeah, I'll do that by your mouth port. If you have anything else to.
Okay, okay. So last part that I would say, so the update back to you with the, from the planning commission, I, I will say. I just a little bit of feedback and relay the message that, hey, we want this extremely profitable and. I was in a sense reminded the process is underway. They did here, they wanted, they want to get here, uh, complete the process. And to do so. And to do so as quick as possible, which I believe that will be December. Of course, I think that's my understanding of it.
Can we get the draft? Do we get the drafts? Javier, just whatever, see where we're at with it, so we don't have to wait till December, just to see, so we get a start on it.
That that's.
No, wait, hold on. I looked at this uh weaving of principles and stuff like that and, you know. If it's anything like this, you know, I I have a lot of questions about this already. And it's gonna take some time to to uh to edit this and review it, it's gonna be editing, and so. If we can't get it, then I do think we need to see how we can uh uh extend the process and and and. You know, finish it up uh next year sometime, next frame, say. Uh because that, you know, it's it's well overdue and and you know, editing is gonna take a a month or two, I would think. Because uh I mean, and I I'd be good for Eileen to look at it, because she's really good at that kind of stuff. And she might not be here in uh January. I'm like, well, it won't be, but anyway, I just like maybe we could get what's available and take a look at it and uh. And and get a head start on that for us.
Just just the answer that the planning commission absolutely seconded to that and would say that's not the right procedure. So the process is planning commission, then it's a document, it goes to public hearing. Comes to the town council and the town council can have that, you know, the town council can that, it doesn't, once it comes to the council. Council can make all kind of edits, the council can do all kind of things, but the process of the document is to come as a completed. Document that then the council can have, it's council then.
Jim, with FOIA, did we, did we get that?
Yeah.
Uh with FOIA through information, just kind of take a look at that, or do we, or are we locked into this?
Plan Commission? Yeah, as an individual citizen, you can do that.
Okay, well, I don't do that. I think this uh it's got, I mean, I, I mean, one of the things.
I think also it's a public document and then a public hearing and you can go down to the office and get a copy right now.
It's not a public document until it's been submitted.
Right.
No, it's 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 been, it's been uh publicized in meetings and it there's, it's been produced and so forth, and I've seen.
Well, thanks. It's not finalized, I mean, it's.
The town council's input, it's kind of a planning mission, they let us do our job, give it input at the right time.
The procedure is also for us to get a draft at a certain time, right?
Yeah, that was a mistake.
Planning Commission is not beholden to the town council, the town council doesn't tell the planning commission what to do. The town, the planning commission advises the town council. And when they present the document, they are advising the town council, but this is what we would like to see. Actually, the state statute says you don't even have to do a new one, you only gotta do is review it every five years, you don't have to change it.
Mr. Bonner, did you have a comment with that?
And there's no.
I don't think I'll go there, but. Comprehensive plans is, if you look at Almar County, it's what, it's three hundred pages, so you're you've got a small one. But it tends to be a voluminous document that uh suffers the the problems with all the such. A pla- any kind of plan or a guide does.
But my problem is Javier, can you hear us? When?
Yeah.
When did Lincoln join us? Lincoln joined us when Becky was still here. When was that?
That would have been twenty-two of, wait. July.
May of twenty-two, I think.
Twenty-two, yeah.
My number, my memory served me. Wait a minute, please let me finish. May of twenty-two, we were promised an initial draft by December of twenty-two, the first one. December came and went, it went to March of twenty-three. March of twenty-three came and went, it went to June of twenty-three. June of twenty-three came and went and so on and so forth. It has been a very, very long time for delivery. My concern is the accountability to timelines to give the council enough time to do an adequate job. Before this is done. This is, this has been way overdue, way over.
Two things, two things on this. One is that there's no penalty of law or fine involved if it's not done by January first.
Okay.
And the second thing is that we have been given reams every time of of paper. Every time one section has been pretty much finished, there have been reams, there's, there it is, right there, you can look at it, it's on there. And the meetings are all open to the public and you can go to any meeting, there's been tons of meetings. So if you have something to say, you say it when you get the copy of what was done, and here's what we're there, just like Bill said. Here's what was given us from the other night's meeting, he has questions about it, he has every right in the world to say. What is this all about?
Javier, it's been changed since those meetings and whatnot, so we need to know what is actually coming across the desk. And I think there should be some accountability to timelines. We can just go willy-nilly and just drag this process out forever with no accountability? That seems.
I was with the mayor of London to back up Dan on saying the council would like to have this done by the end of the year. And if we can get it done, would they have their public hearing next month and we have our public hearing in December, we can get it done by the end of the year.
Okay, if we have a public hearing, the council, when does the council get to to edit that and review it?
After their public hearing next month.
So you have a month to review a voluminous document?
How many pages would you, how many pages?
Probably gonna be about, I think it'll be about the same as what last, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're looking at, so through the whole process, we've had a shared OneDrive that uh. Town council has been, had access to, but we shared the matrix, because it serves as something a little bit closer to executive summary. Rather than a lot of working documents, that's kind of just tough to kind of dig through and get to the to the meat of it, but like. To the point, uh what the seventeenth, which is this Thursday, we're looking at an updated shared document. With the final pieces that we parts together last week, uh during that meeting that the mayor attended of the matrix. And then um, well, I shared uh the slides from last Monday with town council, it's in your packet. So the last four pages have the uh schedule we have here, um so.
But we've been, we've been given several schedules Javier, and none of them have been accurate. So I don't trust any schedule that's coming across our desk right now.
But from my side, I I, it's been clear town council wants it by the end of the year. So, uh you know, I still have to, we still have to put some kind of schedule down and then plan towards that.
My bother, because there's no commitment to schedule, so we can just let it go ad infinitum forever. There's no penalty.
I think the town administrators heard that you wanted by. Okay, how much change is this from what 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 has existed? How much changes from what has existed?
How much change? I think the matrix is a good chunk of change, um it's still based off of the old one.
But you don't have the same organizational structure that you had before.
Where.
Chapters and so forth.
We have chapters, but it's got changed a little bit by the matrix, so there's a little bit more work than expected.
Well, if there's only a little bit of change, why is it taking three years to to change it? Right? I think it's three years almost in the making, two and a half years.
And will they be working on this the next uh meeting?
I think they're just taking mass.
Yeah, I think we have the ability to go to that meeting if we wanna.
In 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 fairness, in in fairness to our councillors, um. The planning commission, uh the reason I'm smiling was just the same way that you are receiving me, I was received over there.
Last time that was true.
And it's true here too.
I seem to remember.
That's okay, so what I, what I was trying to say ultimately is, and that's totally fine, so what that means is. On the planning commission's side, they hear, they wanna get things. I mean, that the the in good faith, this has taken enormous amount of time, many, many hours, it's taken many planning commission meetings, nobody's. Nobody's sleeping on this, it was a joke to say that, in very good faith, there's been a good effort there. This is, in a sense, it's nonpartisan, it's being presented, nobody's had an agenda that's. Lincoln has done a really good job in trying to gather information and he's tried the best he could. In fact, what I'm trying to say is, we got a guy who really is very skilled and it's probably why it's taken longer, I think, because we have somebody who's. Bringing an extra ability to it, but that being said. What's, when we get the document, that's where we will get. It will, at the same time, as it comes, the council will be able to rip it apart, do whatever the council wants to do with it. But in good faith, a lot of research has been done to try to understand how people see what needs to be done. At the same time, we have to remember, we went to a times a town a couple of years ago, there was great. Friction, that this document isn't, there's no agenda in this document, it's simply gathering information. It's trying to be as helpful as possible in that, so I think you'll be pleased as you see what's here. And then as it's presented, then the council has full ability to go through. The scratch sections, do it, those sections, do whatever you want, but at any rate, I I just wanna assure you. I think they, they would, they would be insulted if they heard some of what you're saying here tonight. And I would, I would not blame them to feel insulted if they heard of something like you're saying here tonight, so I'm simply saying to you. Be careful what you say about these volunteers, the planning commissions, who've given a lot of time, a lot of effort to this. They care about it as much as we do. Again, I just wanted to be respectful. I don't mind getting shot in those directions, that's part of this job, but my point is, we'll have all that we wanna do with it. We'll have time to rip it apart and look at it, whether it's December, January, February. Mr. Mayor, I think your timeline you made is a little too fast, so to speak, in terms of what I understand, but I'm happy to. Again, I'm just a voice.
So it's not the same.
There was, that, to my knowledge, there's, it would take another month or two at the planning commission to come, have a, having a meeting. I think they won't have a.
The next year.
I think, I think, again, the, what I'm saying to you is, I think there's a document that's, by my understanding, be ready in December.
My, my point is, respect runs both ways. The commission promised certain things to us in certain dates, and nobody has come, you have come kindly as a liaison. But nobody has said, oh, is this okay by you? Does this put you guys in a bind? Is this, there's been no conversation? From them to us either, so if there's disrespect, then I think we can call that even on both sides. That's at least the way I feel about it personally. Hey, you had a comment?
Well, I'm I'm glad the planning commission is being thorough. But I would say to remember being promised the document in December. The reason I remember that is because I also remember that we were compensating the intern. And I guess there's still doing that? Okay, so we hit up to a point, I guess.
Right, and there was an extension.
But with no compensation.
No, there was an extension on his compensation. But there hasn't been a second. Well, it was the first allocation, then there was a small extension, and then there has been nothing since then. Is that correct, Javier?
Yeah, there was just one extension, and since then, he's been a volunteer.
It's carried, it's carried until December of last year.
Yes.
She's been working.
I think so.
I was wanting to get that straight, because.
But we were promised it in December.
I understand remember being promised in December, now I understand, you know, things will arrive and thankfully. This thing has had enough time to be worked on, um that if a review is all we need, we wouldn't want to review this thing for. Ten years. I mean, it's been reviewed month by month, so anyway, last few cents. Most of, I'll say, I'm I'm again hesitant to tread into this discussion, but most of these things, if you look at uh generic. Uh comprehensive plans of of in communities uh the size of. Scottsville, larger towns and what have you, not very large places, they're a bunch of fluff. And and so you get a product that's a full high flow, flowing high sounding words, but when you get into it, you can't really get a hold of anything. So you may well end up with a product that's that's far better than what you usually end up with and what you had before.
I hope that's the case, but I, it's been my experience that that plan has been referenced quite a bit. Um over the years, depending on different development projects and things that have gone on, different discussions about strategy and the future of Scottsville.
Right, right, but it's just, but it's just, if you, if you knew how it would adopt it, you'd laugh.
I don't know, I guess I take it more seriously.
The the earlier one, the earlier one had, it looks like it's, this one's had a couple of years review, I think. If my memory is correct, the last time it was adopted, it had a review about, what, a month?
Yeah, that's good idea.
But if there are minimal changes, why is it taking almost?
You know, I, from the beginning, I, the reviewing it, because I was involved too, and then. They were reviewed and we changed things and we did things, but this one I got the feeling they they were kind of reinventing the wheel, they were gonna tear everything apart and start from the beginning and do all kinds of things. And that's my concern, is we haven't really seen what they changed. Reviewing would have been easy, I think, but this is a major. Uh change and we haven't seen it and and.
You'll have, you'll have all the time in the world to see, you can take as long as you want. Oh yeah, there's no deadline, it's just, it's just that uh um if you drag the process out to five-year plan, it becomes an eight-year plan. That's okay, it's just a plan too, it's not, it's not written in stone, it's a guide.
Yeah.
That's the thing that people don't understand about comprehensive plans.
Right. Well, and I know he was new to this process, didn't never did this, and he's and he's and he's out of town and and all that, you know, so he's got some difficulties, but. Maybe Javier, you and the planning commission and uh and and Lincoln. Can really come up with some recommendations for five years, how to make this process work. Because this process was not good, so maybe there's some ways we could look at this for the next time. About how to streamline the process and make it uh more manageable.
I don't think, well, good luck.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, you look at Almar County, they're having the same problem right now, is it?
They're way behind too.
Oh, of course they're way behind, and also then everybody starts out with high goals and. It's it's a, it's a guide for community, a guide for the community and it ends up being a, it's it's hard to get a finger on, but it is a guide, remember that.
From what I'm reading, the other.
It's not a constitution.
No, but.
Almar's reviewing theirs, I saw documentation that Luisa council is reviewing theirs. A lot of councils have it in their hands now because of the five-year land, right? And I I don't think it's unreasonable to say after almost three years that we have a draft in our hands.
I agree.
All right, that's good.
Okay, anymore on that?
Let me add one more point, Mr. Mayor.
Government services.
Okay, well, uh the main issue with the with the maintenance is the government service, we look at the maintenance, the town maintenance, and we met Javier about. Uh things that need to be done over the winter and we pass it down to him and we see, we tell him, well, we see it's about over. And next month, we're gonna jam about that directly, about some other things. Uh so we, so maintenance is the biggest, you know, what what can happen over the, you know, the forces, we got a list of things that can be done. Over the next five, six months. And we also, okay, we'll talk about later, most, the government service, we'll talk about uh the donation uh process. Uh uh pretty finite process, and that's part of the agenda, we'll talk about that uh later on. Yeah, I I met with Almar about them and they use some expressions of, you know, tactic now.
So we've been meeting, well, first let me talk about E nine-one-one, the policy on address markers went out, so the inventory was conducted. There were sixty-nine homes without any address marker in town, they've all been notified as of yesterday, Javier, you sent out the mailing?
Uh last Thursday.
Oh, last Thursday, we got ours. Okay, everybody got there, um and uh. So I suppose that the next step, now that they've been alerted, is to at least keep up on that. And then offer the E nine-one-one sign, so I think at this point, we should go ahead and purchase E nine-one-one signs. To have in the office for people to take advantage of if they so choose. Anybody else have any comments on that?
Are you going to, what do they say to that? You have second amendment, so you have none?
That's up to Javier in the year, I guess.
Did Bill ask about enforcement? Is that what you asked, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there's zoning code for class four misdemeanor, uh, but it'd just be a zoning issue. So I would just follow up with my. Uh, same as a air sign or, um, you know, a porch without a COA. Um, I'd go through our zoning code and then, um, collaborate on seeing what kind of compliance we can get into. You know, I think Melanie already received a call today, so, um, people are receiving, so we'll probably have in the mail, um. We sent it out certified mail, but I'm hoping that offering a free sign, um, is pretty, um.
There's available to help, uh, because we have a lot of senior citizens who actually put those things up, so.
Yeah.
That's sixty-one houses, that's like a third of the houses in town.
Yep. Jack offered, Jack offered some of his cert volunteers and review of the volunteers that. Four people that were unable to put up signs, um, that the. That the cert volunteers would work with the property owners who put them up.
Our department also offered their services when they came to government services meeting classes. And hers, we said absolutely no.
Okay, so that.
And if you, if people, Jack, you have to engage the emergency services from the police and fire rescue. It's not just the towns trying to make them do something, it's so that they can be responded to and find somebody to find them.
For their own sake.
Yeah.
No, I I I understand that, but you know, the committee has no control over installation or things like that. So it's on Javier and, um, town staff to take it from there. But I think at this point, we can purchase some signs and the numbers. Eddie's adept, as I know, he did learn from me about. How to put the numbers on because those things are really sticky and once you peel them off, you got to put them on right, right?
You got one chance.
One chance.
They're kind of like a metal looking reflective with a adhesive that, you know. Makes, you know, ditches look like, it's like little ditches on a dinosaur. And if you stick it on a metal plate, the ones I've dealt with. And if you don't have it right, it doesn't come off. And if you're off of your turret, you can turn a eight into a five real fast. There's nothing that, uh, Joe Omar wants to try. He better lie to you.
Well, we'll come here, I I but I think I don't see that there's going to be a mad rush to the town office for E nine one one signs, so.
I'm also hoping that, I lead, um, but also before I forget, I talked to the rescue squad, Almar County Rescue Squad. About these signs and they're also, um, willing to offer time, so I think, so I think we're in a, well, it is, uh, uh. We got a good opportunity just coordinating at this point.
Okay, that's great. So should we go ahead and purchase a certain amount? We have our five thousand envelope.
The way I scheduled it, I was thinking about purchasing, uh, this week, so I'll probably touch base with you, Ailee.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, on the OX plan, I just want to stress to everybody, we're going through a process and you have to hand out. The goal is to develop something like this, like a flip chart with the threats and contacts and sort of what to do. In certain emergencies, what some very important contact information is, where some. Uh, assets are located. So we're going through a process that five recommended of identifying incidents, uh, assets and responses. Uh, the, we went through and identified, um, incidents and grouped them into seven categories. Next meeting, we're going through assets and then the next activity would be response. One of the things I do want to bring up to the council is there, in the, in the wake of Helene, there were some comments. Um, that were poignant to the discussion about emergency preparedness. Uh, we hope we're on what I mean. One, concerns. Fuel cards for our police officers, that they have them for fuel and other things that they would need in emergency. So there's something called a P card system that other organizations take advantage of. Sponsored, I think, by Bank of America. I have an action item to follow down probably this week. But Chief, do you want to talk a little bit about P cards and where they're useful and what maybe the town can do to implement those?
Yeah, I think you hit it right on the head when you talked about just in cases of an emergency. Uh, when I first got here in the town, the council remembers, uh, power went out in the town. Come back on fairly quickly, but power remained out in Buckingham County, Fluviana Counties. All the gas stations were down over there in those two jurisdictions and everyone ended up in the town of Scottsdale, a few. Well, what we discovered after a couple of days, power outage being in those two counties, fuel supplies run short here in the town. And police cars were having to run not on the eighty-seven octane, but ninety-three octane. The P cards would allow an officer, let's say, uh, if town run out of fuel. Or there was an emergency, the officer needed to get a piece of equipment to continue on with what they're doing. P card would allow them to make that purchase, um, bring the receipts back. And just like it would be a credit card, but it's, it's called a P card. I think it's through Bank of America. Alamar County had them and implemented it on all of its police officers. Uh, and it was just for that, uh, out of town trainings, uh, in case of an emergency that happened, uh, emergency. Fuel cost and things like that. Uh, my recommendation set a, uh, a limit at on the P card. And that way, if, you know, the officers can only spend up to a certain dollar, now as the council already set that for. But it does, you know, the credit cards we have now is Javier's and mine. And very limited, and if I'm out of town or it'll take me a little bit to get back here in town, I mean, a lot can happen in just a little bit. Uh, so having the officers the capabilities to be able to make it an emergency purchase, whether it's fuel or whatever it is. Is just smart in my mind, so they can continue to operate until one of us gets on the scene. You can take over them.
And you'll be on the scene then.
So I'm I'm going to look into the P card system, but I think we should do something sooner or later. So if for some reason we can't get into P card system because of our size or whatever, I still recommend that we. Purchase maybe prepaid cards to the officers who have in the event of an emergency. If they need it, even if it's two hundred dollars each or something like that. As a corollary, um, to the discussion Chief had about fuel cap. We should have a system where we should start working maybe within the community, maybe Tiger, maybe folks down here. Where there is a fuel cap, that they will reserve a certain amount of fuel for our first responders, for the police. And maybe, I think the fire, um, fire departments have theirs. But they reserve a certain amount of fuel in an emergency for our, uh, police department. So we need to start working on that. The other thing that came out with Helene was, uh, medication. Medication was in short supply. So one of the other thoughts that came out is that we should reach out to Rite Aid and see what medications they have on hand. And if they can, if an emergency is declared, they can have a cache of medications for locals, people to. Get the medications, critical medications that they need should a, an emergency arise. So those were some, I think, really important points that I think we need to work on, Javier. I think you and I might discuss like working with some of the local merchants on that.
Mm-hmm. I think this is, yeah, it seems interesting. I'll touch base at the same time, uh, to talk about other EPC stuff.
Okay.
Between the, between, uh, what is it, P cards and then fuel reserve? And I don't think we spoke about medication last meeting of EPC, so that's, that's another interesting, uh. Wrinkle in preparedness.
Overall lesson learned from.
I mean, I'm not sure if the town's ever had, you know, that type of P card or money card for a stay.
The town used to have an agreement with the Exxon and they did.
You?
Yes, sir. They did, and Tiger owns the market down here and share property.
Yeah.
Do you know how many gallons George they kept on hand for first responders?
Yeah, no, I don't, but they they did, I don't maintain a base.
So you think Exxon might be able to?
I'd probably revert to the market since that's more of a corporate store. This is our least store. But yeah, and they have, they have the side of tanks that.
They have local contact too, so we can really have.
Yeah, the family is very agreeable to someone.
And really community minded.
Very much so. E- even to when they, we have the pumping woman, we are already in conversation with them about providing. The responders would be down there, some coffee and maybe some snacks rather than all in their nickel.
That's true. So those are, uh, those are some important points, I think, that we need to follow up on. There's some degree of urgency, I think, just in case we are coming into bad weather. We know that power outages, communication outages, these things happen that this season, so I'd like us to make that a priority. That's it.
Questions for, for, for.
Yes, I'll talk real quick. Uh, we have, we have a van inspection, I mean, a creek, uh, van. And, uh, uh, we're gonna have to remove some trees and we might have to get a contractor, maybe, uh, maybe you are. Because there's some trees too close to the dam and they said they didn't talk about this for years, so we may have to figure out how we can get those trees removed. Uh, I think it might be too much for Jan. I did walk the trail, the trails with Jan and, you know, they, he had been on some of them and and the park is pretty well maintained. But he, he looked at, he has some good ideas, so someone maintained some of the trails. Uh, there's some small jobs to be done over the winter and we gave him a list of that. The park said he came to our meeting and we got a list of things that could be done, uh, over the winter for the, for the park. Small jobs, the big jobs down the road are going to be there. But one of the biggest things, not the biggest, one of the ma- major. We need a trail marker on a overlooked trail, remember the Billy look trip? There's nothing indicating that there's a overlooked trail. And we're gonna put diamonds there too, to let people know that that's a tough trail. So we're gonna, we do need to do that. And then the last thing is, so next month, we're going to be looking at the master plan, uh, updating that and. Probably should get that on the same schedule as the, uh, comprehensive plan, because I think it was updated about two eight, two thousand eighteen. So it's due for, uh, you know, revisions of, of, of some of the things we could do over the next, uh, five months.
Any questions? Maybe one comment to add to that, just to get environment same page, um, met with, I met with, uh, James River Association, the ops down there. And we're setting up a volunteer day to tackle the invasives along, uh, Meek Creek back here, so that's, um, being set for winters.
Yeah, they did that years ago. That, remember that, that's great.
Yeah, uh, uh, maybe a little bit longer term of plan, like one getting them out of there, but then dealing with what we never going to come back as well.
There were some actions on to that point, I think, there was some actions in the all hazards plan, if you remember. They came and reviewed us and we had to improve the all hazards plan, which we had to review very quickly. One of the things was to trim back some trees in the creek area.
Yeah.
So this would satisfy that action on the all hazards.
Yeah, those were mostly a few conditions. You could take that one?
Yeah. You could.
You mind hanging too, just reminds them of the project you did on, it's like twenty years ago, you took the steps and that was something.
Yeah, that was introduction with, um, when I was more involved with the B Mountain Lanescape Association. And we did a volunteer project to put in, the Lanescape Timbers to the steps that, uh, went off to that overlooked trail. And also cut out a lot of the down logs and trees that were making it impossible. You know, there was another section right there at the entrance that were just taken over by vines and stuff up in the trees. And we rescued them for the time, but they've moved away back home.
Wow, sounds great. You still involved there?
Um, indirectly, yes.
This is nice to have stuff with the other. Those are the channels.
That's, uh, that's sure could move a lot of things.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, this is our here for events committee report that James Frey recovered the, uh, she was in a meeting on emergency, you know, last, when we. Had our holiday happens meeting, so I don't know if there's any other events, then we spirit walk and, uh, town holiday celebrations coming up. Then you'll be in a holiday, you'll be a farmer, that's good in the farmer's market, so. We'll talk around before I care.
Either, I I didn't get an answer. Do we know if anybody from the church is still doing the trunk retrieve?
Talk to Matt Allen, I know they're going to be down at the, uh, video.
Yep. Greg, Greg's right, they already submitted an application, everything, so they're set to go.
Uh, Mr. President, why you have the one phone, why don't you give a search?
Yeah, I'll just repeat what I wrote down in my town administrator report, so, uh, Melanie Quarter updated me that she, uh, included in your packet a, uh, financial statement. That she had completed and then, um, she'll be working this week on the August, uh, financial statement. Um, in hand, you should have the July, uh, one, so we'll just keep kind of moving forward, um, getting those done prior to next Monday. Thank you.
Hey, um. Our report is this, I, uh, have a paper commerce board meeting this, uh, early this month. Uh, when Jack was collecting, uh, donations in the shopping center on Saturday, uh, went down and met some of his out of town volunteers there. A couple from Virginia Beach, we're coming out.
In New York.
New York too?
Yeah.
Uh, it's just to be commended for, I mean, the little book truly lights now, it was along the wall of innovation.
Yeah.
Every time I turn around, there's Jack and he's already doing something good for the community and that's, uh. Pretty much why I was awarded the citizen of the year at the dinner that, uh, that I had last Wednesday night. Um, they started mentioning, went to the planning mission meeting on Monday, and we're trying to lunge them along. And holiday happiness meeting, um. And I sat in with the chief and Javier, it was a pretty interesting video, uh, video we were watching, uh, on the computer of, of. Actual presentation on video, video surveillance cameras and what they can do and, uh, it's just amazing now, so. You need to really behave yourself. They've got one that will take a picture of a license plate and immediately tell you that. There's any problems there. Uh, that was a very interesting, we're looking at some cameras. Uh, the spirit walk of the museum, as you mentioned, was, uh, it was coming Friday, Saturday and on Sunday afternoon. If anybody wants to sit in the theater and have a presentation, this is all at least, uh, interesting to do, and a lot of these tour at night. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, is, uh, they had alluded to the, uh. And and I I only know the, the, I only know one party in the situation, and that was the. Uh, council, the commissioner the other night at the planning mission, mentioned that they were approached by a county number and passing on the. It was presented to me as a number, not really. Little friendly, I'll go off and do a more branding and, uh, story with your commissioner and it looks at that commissioner. So I've, uh, looked in, uh, I've been seeing this before, but I just wanted to read this one sentence of this, everybody should have one. All the good stuff there. And it talks about giving sales and support for pointed bodies. And it reads, communication and courtesy are key to a successful relationship. Failure, all of it, the modeling, the story, the morale of the committee or commission numbers. Also create, create the image of a council that does not listen to its employees, thus making it more difficult to build future agencies. But it's like the old thing of saying about you more. You, by offering honey than, than it hurts. So you have to remember, we're all, we're all volunteers, although. When you're appointed or elected, you're still volunteer of the nature, so. Uh, look out for one another and it's a lot of, uh. So there's a lot of, uh, behavior in the, in the rural day that doesn't reflect, uh. The way we should be doing it, okay? So that's our report, um.
Can I just add something to that you? Can I just add something to, that you brought up, that good, um, Nancy had a broadcast with Laura and Lucy, and they talked about, and it used to be after election, everybody would, um, be presented, I think, with that, be reminded that the, there is a code of ethics. They would uh, select the committees and the liaisons and things like that. There was a bit of a process that happened after election. And since this is an election year, I think it might be good to go back to that process where, you know, we, we have a welcome packet, I know I worked on it a couple of years ago, Javier has that. We have new people coming in, it would probably be a nice gesture to just revisit those things.
And since it looks like, uh, former mayor Bill is listening to us this evening, I was all ready to listen to the podcast this. And my internet, but I had to go to the post office, so I come down the drive, and there's two pieces on wire. They didn't rip the car laying in the driveway. Who knows how it got ripped when they were supposed to be up there? So I ran by the censured link office, and of course nobody was there, and so sometimes you can catch them in the parking lot, get up there and you call.
They were there earlier this morning.
Take care of the problem. So I came on down to their office, hit this office and I saw Jack and uh, he said, hello, it's my next door, and I said, I'm frustrated, told him the problem. He's got on the phone, I mean, I didn't even, he turned around, he got on the phone to somebody and said, they'll, they'll be fixing it for you. Well, he called me this afternoon and they haven't fixed it yet. And they're coming next Tuesday, twenty second.
Next Tuesday.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Wow.
Bright speed, whatever it's.
Yeah.
Kind of your year.
Hey, Ron, have a follow up for you.
So I will try to listen to the podcasts, whatever, and I do.
Well, Nancy, since you're on, I did listen. I thought it was very interesting.
Well, let me ask this, Bowlin, if he has anything, he wants to pass along.
Just a couple of things, I want to talk about political signs and also about the BZA ordinance and uh, uh, the, the other thing is that I was approached by the service authorities, attorneys, about getting an easement from you guys and ladies, uh, concerning a, a water line that they're putting in, that, that, Dora Parker of all places, and that'll be coming before you soon, as part of one of the projects they're doing.
That's the one that's gonna run over across the field to treat the system.
Uh, I don't know where it goes, I just know they've, this, they've, they've done a couple, and this is another one that they've started up and in the process of getting off the ground.
Mayor Smith's correct, it's a line going across the field, uh, to have a generator for, um, the treatment center on the other side of Dora Parker.
I thought they told us they had a generator.
It's a backup.
Two generators?
They have, they have all backup, they require to have backups.
I, I, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, well, if you're familiar with the town road here. Javier, anything else?
Hear me, didn't you have a point about? Stun.
Oh, yeah, that's an agenda.
Yeah, that's good.
Javier, is there anything else you need to?
Well, I'll, since we have a long agenda, I'll just hit some points, but uh, um, I'll, I provided a staff report for, um, for you guys to read, um, so we already covered that, uh, I s- uh, sent out, um, certified mail letters, uh, informing town residents about the street address ordinance that we have on the book. Um, I, I recommend that you just review, uh, my notes, um, we'll be looking for a new, uh, farmers market manager. I was informed that, um, our current one, uh, wanted to wrap up this season and assist us was looking with, uh, for a new farmers market manager for the next season. So we'll move quickly, cause already in the winter, you're planning for next year, um, and then, uh, let's see. I think everything else, uh, we could, we're covering through the agenda to some portion, but I did wanna forward, um, I think I saw Mr. Tachi.
Could you touch on that for a minute, so we'll all be, know what's going on?
Yeah, so, um, with two items, I've been talking with Mr. Tachi, uh, this fall, uh, the first one was, uh, he reached out to me to follow up on some work, or some, I guess discussions council had before I started about the train depot, um, if you pass by there either, you know, as part of the ARB inventory, for example, um, it's continuing to deteriorate. Um, I know that, I think, maybe the first or second meeting I was here, it was discussed and kind of passing as a kind of a going concern. Um, so I thi- I think Mr. Tachi just wanted to, um, kind of be an advocate, cause he's been keeping an eye on it of, um, of it continuing to deteriorate. I think he gave an example that like, even animals are getting in. If he's nodding off screen, I, I, I think I remember our conversation, right? Um, and then the second one was, uh, I've been talking with Mr. Tachi, he uh, received a property, or he's been working on a property, I don't know the exact details, up Holman Street. Um, and, uh, Holman Street has a old street sign, um, a green one. Um, so we were going back and forth trying to figure out the historical information, uh, what I found is a few maybe six years ago, um, and I shared that with the mayor, a, um, set of minutes and a confirmation from the previous town clerk. Seems that we, um, we, uh, we gave up the easements, we, uh, we vacated a thwart, we vacated a portion of Holman Street closer to town hall about six years ago, and then through discussion, it seems that we, years back, uh, mislabeled, uh, a portion of Ho- Holman Street that's off Poplar Spring Road, um, but this conversation started, cause, uh, Mr. Tachi wanted to see if, um, between VDOT or the town, who was responsible for road maintenance up there. Um, but I shared that, uh, that document I found last week with, uh, the mayor a little bit. Uh, but what I wanted to forward, cause we've been playing kind of telephone tag with Mr. Tachi, especially is for him to describe a little bit about that train depot. We've kind of last month been talking about taking care of various items, historic pavilion lies, canal basin, et cetera, and this might be one of the items, uh, but I, I'll, I'll, uh, hand this off to you, mayor, since I'm not in the room.
Bottom line, you're saying it's not a public road, it's a private easement.
Yes, correct, Jim.
Thank you.
Any questions for Javier?
Would you like to go through the rundown of the train depot?
Well, well, Matt Lawless, uh, had asked me about a year and a half ago, well, we actually went along with a little, while he was here to get prices, give you a price on doing, getting at least the roof we had, so that, that to keep the water out. The buildings last a lot longer until they decide what to do with it. He had mentioned something like that, uh, make, the railroad company had given them, was proposing a grant to the town to do that work. So we've done this, we, we hit our numbers and we got our subcontractor for the roof and so forth, and, uh, that's what I was talking to, uh, you know, Javier about, just saying, where do, where are we gonna go from here, you know? Uh, because it is going to, it is going to buy. And, uh, it might be a nice thing for the town to have, you know, if, if, if the depot, if this train company's not using it. Why not, you know, deed it over to the town and then, uh, we can run some grants and repair it as a historic building. It'd be a great place for police, police officers to hang out.
Well, uh, too full.
It would be perfect for a park. It would, that's a great idea.
Uh, several, several years ago, and I can't remember whether it was before Nancy was mayor or during her term, she and I met with the CSX people on doing something down there, and they said it's too close to the train tracks and it's a liability and we couldn't do anything with it. Start using it for a tour, uh, for a open center or a museum or anything like that.
Well, a little imagination.
Then they're all of those.
I guess it never bends to orange, which is.
Yeah, the train runs.
It's an old CSX, and no, it's terrible.
Right.
Yeah.
My experience with the, I see that every time. That's that's first.
They will release two of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
They won't move the tracks, but.
I hiking back to a point you made, Eddie, at the last meeting, where you say, we always talk about using, but we're not good at maintaining the things that we have, and I think that should be a priority to get these things structurally up to date, so that we don't have to worry about them, if, if at all possible.
Yeah, they did give us money, uh, but it wasn't going to last, it was dollars, so.
That was landscaping.
When we painted it or what we did with it.
But if the roof's falling in, that's, I would think that's a bigger liability than having a heart center near the train tracks, having a a building that's not occupied, we have a roof that's paving in and.
Means a track, a nuisance, a surprise, well, you know. Bagels.
Absolutely.
You know.
Well, I think if the railroad had this drivers that tailed downs, like they were likely to do that because it would look better.
Yeah, for a start.
And then, so essentially they're letting it by default, just fall down. And, and then if you, if, the bottom line, if you're, they throw up roadblocks, as Eddie pointed out about why you can't do anything with it. Assuming you could come up with the half a million dollars it would take or whatever, more, you know, that's kind of the look of the thing when you get into something like that to do it. So you're, you're pretty rock in the hard places, figuring out what to do unless you can shave the railroad somehow.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, I mean, literally, we, to, to, to take some action to preserve this thing, but, but, I mean, it's, it says easy to find grants, but there's a scene of these railroad stations here, there and everywhere, and, and I don't know how, how available funds are and get renovations for railroad station.
Mr. Bowlin, one thing, one thing I would say, and Mr. Tachi, to you also, could be and maybe also to follow up with Council Morse. One thing that happens, there will be an agenda item that is of interest, this might have been five years ago, it's absolutely not on the radar of this current council, um. It could be, you know, again, but it hasn't been, and so that project that you, maybe that what you've done was from a long time ago, disjointed to where we are now, so to speak, and so if this council were to do something, like harkening back, I think it was a five thousand dollar grant for landscaping, it wasn't for repairing the building.
Because they had all the junk out there and then they decided.
Where, where is that really, where really, I, I have mentioned this before, Council Bowlin, who used to be here, it was about his, about every week, we were here, about every month, he would bring up something about a train.
Right.
And because of that, and it's one of the things that's true, is taking an issue and like moving it forward, he was doing that, I mean, to his credit, that was an issue that he championed and it somewhat died with him leaving, and whether we embrace it or not, like Council has to do bring a good point, and you can go back to the overlooked trail, um. There are things that we have to embrace as a council, council going forward, or the new council will be, as new councils come, come on board to see what we will do in the future, but I'm, I'm more just trying to say to Mr. Tachi, that was a project from several councils ago, that has kind of not been followed up on a while, so I don't know that there's any life to any of that at the moment.
To do anything to it, get the railroad's permission?
Pardon me?
No, no.
No?
I don't think so.
Well.
You do anything to the structure, you have to get their permission.
Yes.
It's their bill, it's, oh, it's there, they don't.
Yeah, no, you, you can, you, you can, uh, you can declare that they're, they're building, take it over and repair it yourself on your nickel.
I know somebody that does very good production, you know.
I mean, I'll say this, I mean, it's, you're gonna have to have a real organized campaign with a lot of volunteers. And, and somebody who knows how to, uh.
I watched it take going, so we hear what the market's at.
Well, maybe he's the man, go to it.
And I, I would, I would say that, that, I think, it's just.
There, there is. Nobody goes unpunished.
There's money out there in grants, will be the revitalization of the district, and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I know thirty off the top of my head.
And you look at those grants, that people that got them, and those towns look just like Scottsdale.
Yeah.
Dan, also, it, it is a historic structure.
Right.
So they have some responsibility to respond to the town because of that, they paint legally, but all day.
That's right. So can we write them a note?
I know, but they have to enforce some of that. There, there, there is muscle here to, to take care of it, and the railroad still has plenty of money.
Well, what, what I'm trying to say is, we had a town council here who made it an issue, about every month, Mr. Bowlin will remember. And because there were several times where we had the railroad that was here, or council paying, will remember too, and my point is, somebody would have to really champion a thought.
You have to have, you have to have a political campaign.
They're gonna have to really champion.
Hit their weak points in Richmond, wherever, um, you're not gonna have much luck with Scottsville muscle against the, the railroad company. Uh, I mean, it's not. Well, no, it's not, that's just the way, that's the reality, we know, the railroad company's a big animal, I know, and, and they don't listen to those little people, they listen to big people, so you're gonna have to mouth that can of, can of, can of.
And Mr. Bowlin, the one thing I'll say too, just to go, to use this as a stepping tool to just to, to say one comment about the comprehensive plan, cause it relates to this, once it's completed, you know, we do it, it's explained to the commission, once the town council passes it, we have a council, the new council's starting to figure out what are we gonna do, it's just a document. We have to figure out, okay, are we gonna put our energies into new projects, the train station, or the new projects in the park? Or are we gonna fix and maintain what we already have, are we gonna, in other words, we have a council in the future, this is, there are only so many things we can do, it's a legitimate thing, there are many legitimate things, and we'll have to see who the new voices are who come to determine what we will do, but I do think it's important for us, it's an important asset of the town, and I know I tend to pay you off and make a point every once in a while to say, what was the date on the last passenger train that came through?
Oh, it was in the fifties, I was just a retard.
I know you mentioned it before, that's why I'm finishing it.
Let's go ahead. Dating yourself.
Well, let's keep it on the agenda, it's very.
That's okay, let's, uh, go ahead with three topics, one is one, two billion, Javier.
Um, what you'll wanna bring to the top of your packet is, um, my s- uh, staff notes. Well, the agenda itself, and then a document at the top says, uh, farmers market pavilion capital maintenance. Um, so, uh, just for brevity, what I wanted to, uh, hit the broad strokes is that, um, I've shared with you guys a, um, essentially that three-page documents and inventory of, uh, ongoing conditions and concerns about the farmers market structurally, um, that I've received from a variety of people I've talked to over the last two months. Um, so, um, those three pages are relatively thorough and they include, um, what's prioritized, um, um. First, what's a priority for, for, um, the town administrator, but frankly, it's, um, budget lines that we included, uh, formulating this year's budget. So, um, the top three priorities, um, at the very top are lights, the fans and the farmers market signs, so I think those three were mentioned probably last month, if not earlier in discussions when, uh, when, uh, farmers market representatives attended one of our meetings. Um, and then, uh, what I wanted to kind of point out is, uh, at the bottom of the first page is a scenario, kind of broad strokes of how to just, with our current budget, address those three priorities. Um, and then that goes into the second page, and then the, uh, second page into the third page is something I wanted to get on paper, is just a thorough inventory of everything I've heard about, um, work that we could do in the future on that farmers market condition. Um, it isn't prioritized, it's about what, like twenty lines or something? But I wanted to kind of document it in some kind of document to, to, uh, Dan's point, so that we have something that we can kind of keep holding on to. Um, it just, just doesn't get lost, um. Most important thing I wanted to kind of point out is that, um, as you can see from the document, we have only a couple thousand, uh, in our bucket this year, uh, for, uh, to address, uh, capital improvements. Or not capital improvements, maintenance of a capital item, um, that we currently have. And then, um, I wanted to update quickly, um, one of the items that, uh, was discussed with me, uh, I think George is in the room, was, um, the, uh, cupulas, so it's those domes above, um, the, uh, farmers market, there's two of them. So I went through the process at least to get the paperwork out of the way, um, of, uh, getting a certificate of appropriateness approved and getting some recommendations. There isn't current budget items for that, but I thought it was worthwhile, uh, starting with that, cause it, it seemed kind of detailed enough in documenting it. Um, honestly, these two items. Honestly, these two items that I provided to town council is so that we have a, uh, inventory of needed work on the pavilion. And then to kind of start a discussion about what 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 we feel is feasible. Uh, this year in our budgetary concerns and then of course have conversations about. What kind of budgetary commitment, um, most of it, um, you know. Like even divided by things that I think would be appropriate for our maintenance staff to work on and things that I think are specialized to the point that, um. It would be much more worthwhile to have somebody, um, who knows that's specific trade working on it. Um, but I don't wanna kind of dig into the details of the three pages, um, just to. Um, I provide it as a brief summary for you guys, so. Thank you guys. All right, thank you, Council.
Since that, uh, structure was pretty much funded by USDA, is, do they not have any kind of grants available for maintenance?
So that kind of dovetails us if you want to go into the review of the. ADIF grant, um, I think that's, uh, kind of up the alley of what, uh, the mayor is discussing. Um, do you want me kind of to move on to that item?
We're all in the, this can be, and I, and this is on the market before you go past it. There are some serious issues that we have gone with Javier and and Matthew Hope and and Bill Heisen. There there are timbers, not just a post down below, but above that are rotting. And one that's very visible in the very front of it. On the right, a little piece that goes up to the right, so six inches of it's completely rotten. It, the building, all those white oak timbers need to be treated and preserved. Not next year, it's this year. And that piece, luckily, is a small piece, can be preserved, I have no idea what's happening on those long twenty-one foot timbers in the top. Because you can't see the top of them, they're flat timber that water. Can be allowed to sit on. The gutters have some flashing behind them that is not going into the gutter. It's sleeping, going down behind it, rotting those timbers. We have some work that really needs some serious evaluation and. The council needs to try to appropriate some more money coming out somewhat. Because it's. Deteriorating too, deteriorating too fast. And we can't wait for another year. So. I appreciate the ARV, uh, consideration on the two pillars, I think that will help.
Okay. We get into the ADIF grant.
Yeah, so going off of that, um. I've shared this, I think, in passing with some council members in town when I, um. Just had a converse conversation with them passing by, but around the same timing that we first started discussing, um. With the farmer's market pavilion. Um, I was, uh, shared a, um. ADIF grant, um, there's. In your packet, uh, just for context, there's slides from one of the presentations I attended and then a general, uh, basic guideline. Um, the broad strokes is that, um, this is a infrastructure grant. That is related to, um. Community infrastructure projects, so a farmer's market that addresses. And assists multiple agricultural agricultural business entities, you know, every farm and every business that's under that pavilion on Saturdays. Is it applicable grant to this, um, it is this one out of, uh. The, um, different grants that, uh, the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services has. Is right up the alley for the conversations we've had the last two months, it's, um, taking care of, um. Infrastructure items that you have on hand, so for example, during the presentation they gave was a, a meat prep processing plant. That, uh, local ranchers would use as kind of like a nexus place that they upgraded it into condition and. The appeal of it was that they were serving a region by serving multiple ranchers, um. Same idea would be in an application for, uh, the town, uh, for our farmer's market pavilion. Um, the document I made for you guys was also an exercise personally, just kind of get an inventory and to be able to prioritize. What I might recommend is, um, that, uh, town council look over this grant process, essentially it's a, um. It's a fall and spring grant. Um, the current one opened up October first and then closes down, uh, November fifteenth, and then there's a spring ver- uh, a spring one. But, um, it's a two-for-one match on, um, on, uh. Projects that address multiple. Um, agribusiness, so the farmer market qualified for that, so as I put in the staff notes. Um, think of it just ballpark figure, if if you're, if you're matching seven thousand. Um, you would be applying for a fourteen thousand grant for a twenty-one thousand dollar project. So. Um, I thought it was appealing to share with town council because you usually don't get, um, that great of a match and we've, we've been on the, uh. On a. You know, USDA was the only one that was as competitive as that. Um, but that has kind of flipped over on us, um, there's a slight tight timetable on this one. Um, if we wanted to do it for fall, but I think spring is also another opportunity for us to apply. Um. Well, you would submit to them to the state is through the county, so I, as I mentioned last month. I've set up with Alamooral County for, um, for assisting us with any fiduciary agent needs. So, um, what I wanted to kind of share with you is that I think this is a reasonable grant for us to apply for. Especially considering how pertinent, um, as George has said, and as we've talked in last month, uh, us wanting to kind of, uh. Take care of that farmer's market pavilion. Um, but the most important thing is that it is a fiduciary consideration. So that is very important that that is presented to town council and town council, uh, provides direction, um, on that, um.
So Javier, I have a free question.
Yeah.
I'm assuming to your point about fiduciary agents, the last time I wrote a grant, then we didn't have a fiduciary agent and all that amount of time and energy went to waste. So you say you've approached that. Uh, when's that gonna be finalized? Because if this has a deadline or a timeline in November. How are you gonna get it in in November? Are you gonna wait till the spring? Is that what sort of the?
I mean, if. If council feels very comfortable with this during October, I've already started talking to the county about this being a distinct possibility. Um, we'd be really right on the timeline. Um, of like six weeks, which is the process they want, but I think this is a relatively easier, um, we're not asking the county to match. Um, it would at some point be, uh, town council looking to match, or the town itself. Um, but if if there's some. Deliberation and consideration that town council wants to do, I'd rather do that in the spring, um, to give us enough time. I think it's doable if if we feel comfortable with it in October to try to get, um, a grant, uh, submitted and then. Start this winter, uh, with, um, using that grant money.
So do you, Javier, do you have the time to do it? What I hear you saying is you can do it.
That was my honest question, who's gonna write the grant?
It's gonna be me, um, so the other reason I brought it up as an agenda item is that, uh, my concern is, is that I feel. I felt the last week pretty overwhelmed with work, um, but if council provides priorities. Um, I feel much more comfortable saying, hey, I gotta put X or Y on the back burner and then pivot back into a grant and then pivot back into other. Priorities, so for example, uh, you know, we're kind of ramping up to do more canal basin work and then the farmer's market. Became a priority in the last month, but then that doesn't mean that. Um, once we kind of start addressing farmer's market concerns, I'll pivot back into, uh, now basin, um.
I just don't see how we can direct our town administrator to you a grant process and put all the regular administration duties on the back burner until that's done. What, you know, one thing I was thinking, and this is, this is just why, right? We always talk about. And and several groups have come forward and said, we need to hire somebody to write grants, planning commission came, um, and recommended that as far as budgetary process. And a scan has mentioned that, we've talked about that. Is there any way? And this is why. Um, to put out there, is there any way we can find somebody who would do it almost on a commission basis? Like if you wrote a grant and you got the town a hundred thousand dollars, you would get X percent. Of that as payment for the grant, because you're bringing in revenue into the town, so it'd be worth the town to pay that person a certain percentage. So that people might be incentivized to say, hey, I can make. Some money by doing these grants, does anybody ever heard of something like that before? Or is this seem like a model that might be. I mean, I'm just creatively trying to come up with ideas on how to incentivize people to come forward and put some time and energy into writing these grants.
I think I mentioned something along those lines. One, one or two meetings ago and. The reply was, the. Professional grant writers wanna be paid. Whether they get the grant or not.
Yes.
But I'm not talking about professional grant writers, I'm just talking about people who are sitting at home that are. That have put something forward, are willing to submit it on behalf of the town. If we think it's quality work, if it gets accepted, great, and if not, no harm, no foul.
Seems to me like we just gave Scan a break on the red. Didn't we?
Yeah.
And the gentleman sitting over here writes grants. That would've been a good negotiation to the town, but.
No, I think you could find a mutual topic where it benefits both Scan and the town, that would be great. You know, but if it's just a town thing, I'm not, I don't know. I I think there should be something in for anyone.
Sure, it's worth trying, that's on a field, learn to see what happens.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't get you through your immediate problem, which you're hearing that you need to do something pretty quick about the, uh.
And we discuss it, yes. Vote on?
Well, yeah, but. It, you mean vote on whether Javier should just.
No, the one you should go with this grant, go with this grant.
Even then, somebody still has to write it though, there's a practical consideration. How, yeah, are you willing to have him quit his work on the background? Right, so that he can write this grant.
Yeah, well, let's just add it to whatever questions are put forward.
You can always have him do the, do do the grant in spring, I mean, get, please get started on it now, you know, that's the other.
I think in some ways that might be better because he could fit it in with the work schedule. But I still think. Trying a novel model of, you know, incentivizing people with a certain percentage, if you get, if you put this in and the time and you get the money. We will pay you a certain amount of money, I mean, I do it.
It's worth looking into.
Well, Javier said he was, he was a bit overwhelmed here recently with the work.
Right.
Who's to say you won't be in the spring?
Well, it's true, but if we put something like this program together and advertise it, Eddie, maybe a few people will come forward and wanna make a few extra bucks.
Javier, can you, can you do it, do the grant that you have until this spring, would you do it?
I will do it, after I resign, I, you know, a little extra cash. I draft, I draft this grant in a heartbeat, depending on what the incentive is behind it. But I'm not gonna do what I did last time, I'm sorry, I was saying get to that nth degree, ready to submit and there's no fiduciary agent and all my time is wasted. I won't do that.
It's, it's a, it's a four-page application, so it seems on the shorter side, because we've, we've looked at ones that have been really. Um. Laborious and long, so I. It's my first bat, so I couldn't even do the easy thing where I say like, I'll probably take that much time at that hours, um. But, um. I mean, one way or another, I think in the near future, the town should apply for this, it make, from the description. That I shared, it makes sense with the concerns we have, like present in front of us with the farmer's market, um. Um. But yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, you know, and he's probably got a point, I'll probably be, it's, it's prioritizing, um. And. I think if finding somebody who could assist with us, I think, uh, a volunteer force that could assist with grants into the future is really appealing. Um, I've been trying to kind of recruit that, but, uh, I I haven't really had much success, because it's such a technical job and. It's not as appealing as, um. Uh, their volunteer efforts.
Javier, do you have any ties in to? Either UVA or any other universities in terms of intern? And we've, we've had some success with both. Volunteer interns and paid interns in terms of. Any, so do you have any thoughts in that area yourself?
I, I think into the future, you might want to, um, budget a small amount for interns like this, um. Or interns in the future, I found that this summer, the one we had was very useful for paraprofessional work, so you know, something as simple as. Putting together those agenda packets for you guys today, today takes a lot of time. But, uh, you know, the time spent on that, you can spend on researching a grant or writing something up or. Or communicating with council members about, um, you know, something, something occurring in town, um. I think there are currently some, uh. Requirements also for remuneration, uh, through, uh, new, uh, labor laws. Um, but I I don't think that's something as as soon now, um, but I'll touch base and I've tried before. Is that Charlottesville used to have, uh, a program called CAIP, which, um, they were. Taking, uh, um, grade school, uh, uh, students and placing them and renumerating for that, but, um. They can't find anyone who lives in the shot Scottsville area, um, because it's. At that, those are teenagers. UVA, I haven't checked since COVID, COVID, they were providing some remuneration, but, um.
You know, you know, in the, in terms of, and, uh, this council is also with the VML. Take Council Morse's idea, that's not a bad. Concept to see oftentimes if a, if the wheel works, it's been done elsewhere, so to speak, so. It'd be interesting to see Javier, um, from. From VML, if what they say related to how grant writers are. Funded in town, i- is that, is that, what different concepts there are?
I'll, I'll ask him, I think, uh, along the mayor's line and and not to, uh, stifle creativity, but, uh, one thing I was covered was is they'll do, uh. Individuals contracted to do grants do. A set rate, um, especially because you get into perverse incentives. Um, you know, I set a rate higher than another town, you write applications for both of them, but you're gonna write my application better because. Um, I'm, I'm giving you a percentage off of, uh, off of the grant writing. Um, or off, off of the reward, um, but. Um. That being said, it's like maybe reaching out to VLM and see what they address. Or what's suggesting they have to address this issue.
Do you have a good chance of getting this grant, Javier? You're not, you're, you're just, you're not in the critical area of them, you're not in the first category or second category of need, you're in the third category.
Yeah, so we're not in like a, um. Albemarle is not a, like, a distressed area. Which would prioritize you, um, the only advantage is that we have a piece of infrastructure that makes it a little bit more competitive. That's used by multiple, uh, agribusiness, so I could pitch that, hey, there's three counties that the farmer's market provides services to. And then multimodal also, because we rented out, you know, we rented it out, what, two weeks ago for a wedding, for example? And then we'll rent it out in three weeks from now for a truck or treat. Um, but also it's, I. You know. I'm not gonna say immediately, I know we have a good chance or not, you know, I know, I don't do that in sports either, so.
Okay. That was a good answer.
But I, I don't think I'm out of, out of the ballpark, I'll put it that way, like, it it makes sense, it's not us kind of. Trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, it make, it looks similar to other, uh, other awardees in previous years. So, um, that's why I kind of. Presented it to council also.
So it's, uh, four pages, huh? Do you have an idea how, how long it would take to do those four procedures that's with that, uh? Um. I mean, how many hours of work would that be to do that? I mean, you have to get some information and all that, so. Do you have any idea how long it would take?
Maybe I email you back and I, I'm starting to think maybe I ask somebody at VLM and see if. If they know how long, or one of the grant administrators, they might be willing to say this is how long I've heard before.
Cause I know you had a workshop in conference about a month ago, and that might be a good place to start, to say. You know, those types of questions to, to the people who know that and get some answers about ramps and small towns or. Things like that.
Have you, have you got all the materials you need already to show exactly what needs to be done?
Yeah, it has to be a self-generated plan.
That's what's gonna take the time.
Yeah.
And you can't do that.
Right.
I think. I think the estimates on the material or the projects you include is gonna be, is what takes a while, because you can see from. From the staff report, I have a list of the items, but, um, that third table.
You don't have any estimates, you don't have any cost budget and all that kind of stuff, right? Which involves all of a zillion people and.
Right, project planning and stuff like that, to be in place.
That portion. That portion takes almost longer than just like a general description of the town. Jim's got a point there.
But but that, but it's not a huge project, is it?
I don't think so, I, I think compared to, um, what we were looking at hundreds of thousands with BDEM. And the, the format was much more laborious, uh, this seems. This seems smaller, I'll. This seems smaller, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I mean, isn't it gonna be like, it's just, it's, I mean, I have no sense for construction, so I'm no help at all. But it, I mean, what's, what are you looking at budget-wise, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, something like that?
I was thinking of twenty, cause they've been awarding from like five to twenty-five.
And then you, you have a source where you can go out and find somebody who's a good, good construction person that can help you out with. Getting you an estimate and working up.
I, well, there's, there's, there is one in back of the room, and then I've had a few people who have given me advice in general about it, so. I could follow up with them on getting further.
That's, that's the six-week problem you have right here.
Yeah.
Cause Javier, Javier can't do that, that, and that's, that's the four pages is, is how long does it take, it takes. You know, knock that out, who knows, a couple hours, it's a.
A shovel-ready plan is what's difficult.
Yeah, it's coming up with what's actually gonna have to do.
Yeah.
Cause the roadmap, so I, I might suggest council look at it and then maybe we consider this in spring. Um, I think that might be a more um.
Okay, spring's more realistic.
So then you could start and get your estimates now, cause it, you know, just gets, I mean, I don't want it to be very complex, it might not take you any time at all, but it's. You never know till you get into it.
And then you need council approval for all the work. To make sure you have all of that signed off on beforehand, because if not, you get the grant and then.
Then you, then you can't.
You can't get to the work. So you need to be ready to do the work.
Yes, exactly.
Hey, more on that topic? You need Javier to lead in on senior, you wanna take a little talk?
Uh, no, I can, I can talk, this is really a follow-up, Alex, um, Alex had a meeting on housing. Uh, when was it, uh? Over, so over.
Five months ago.
Yeah, five, six months ago. And at that time, Charlie came, several people came from the community, Javier was there, we talked about East Village, we talked about. Housing availability, housing density, and what, and the last thing that you asked Alex was. Well, how many homes are we talking to, how many people are there? Right, so we tried to have a, a. Conversation with Charlie Armstrong, Alex, myself, and Charlie, Alex was not available, so I went ahead. Not that long after and had a meeting with Charlie and myself. And what I discussed with him was based on this flat here. That Matt had. And he had some thoughts initially on. East Village, there's, what I can see is forty-five or forty-six lots with forty-six homes in this area, right? And what I talked to Charlie about was housing density, and I've discussed this with council before. Um, I think there's a lot of good reasons to talk about potential, a potentially greater density in these areas. When I talked to Charlie and, and I've talked to other people, one of the things that becomes clear is sometimes the discussion isn't all or nothing. It's either forty-six homes or it's this really high density with tens of homes. And when I talked to Charlie, I talked to him about, well, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. So I looked at the plan here, Matt had some really good ideas on adding to um. To Vecna, about nineteen acres at that borderline, so we would extend potentially as an ass from the developer. Or that piece of parcel where we could increase and get the trail to extend all the way up there and extend the public lane. He has some provisions for ponds and public space, but I looked at the flat. And I said, well, what if we did something a little bit different where the back part of these lots, which are the biggest spots? The front lots tend to be anywhere from a quarter acre to, I'd say an acre and a half maybe. The back lots are nine acres, ten acres and whatnot. Could we leave those lots in the back as big, single-family homes? And then have some higher density in the middle and front of this. Area. So that it's not all or nothing, it's a combination of low density. And high or highest density. And so what I did then is I calculated out and started drawing across these lots. I, there is a corner lot, and I talked to Charlie about this, where Glenna meets, where this is. On Albabam, right, so Glenna meets Albabam, on that corner, that's a really busy, busy corner. And I said, if it were me, I wouldn't want to live on that corner, you got a lot of traffic potentially coming through there, could we designate that as commercial spot? Where we could house a pediatrician's office or a, you know, a dental practice or something that the community needs in that spot. There's another small block that's a quarter acre, could we potentially put a job park there? Something that would incentivize the community and give the community a service that they don't currently have today. The last question I was you asked was about numbers, what are we talking about in terms of people and numbers? So I went through and said, okay, in the back, I would say there would, might be um. Fourteen single-family homes. In the center of the property here. There's currently eight single-family homes, we could push that to higher density. And in the front of the property. So it's fourteen in the back, eight here and four, and fourteen, twenty-three in the front, sorry, fourteen in the back. Eight in the center and twenty-three in the front. So let's condense those and make some of those higher density. So we keep these, we single-family in the back, the big lots. We have units in the center of the property, which could be like quad homes, townhomes if you will. Done nicely, they could be with a lot of green space preserved, that could work. And then in the front of the property, a concept that I brought to council was pocket neighborhoods. Where you might have single-family homes of very. Uh, loo- low square footage, under a thousand square feet, let's say. Clustered in groups of eight to ten, that has a ground uh green space and community space between them. And they look really charming, alright, so we don't have all or nothing, we have a mixture. If we did something like that, medium density, you could put thirty-six, let's say, pocket homes. In the front of the property. Thirty-two quad homes in the middle and keep the fourteen in the back for a total of eighty-two homes. So you double, basically go from forty-five homes that are currently zoned right now. To potentially eighty-two homes. If you take, let's say, in the low density in those pocket homes, less than a thousand square feet or around a thousand square feet. Let's say you estimate there's two people, this is probably seniors who are downsizing. Or young couples who are first home buyers, and that's probably the, the place that um. The demographic that might be attracted to that, right? You, if you say, okay, in the front, if we estimate two people, that would be seventy-two people. In the front. The quad homes, if we say, let's say it's larger townhomes, if two parents and a child. Or some extended family, we estimate three people per those, it would be ninety-six people. And then um, in the back, the fourteen would be fifty-six. It's estimate four people, right? Families, that would give you a total of potentially two hundred and twenty-four people, you would add.
Two hundred and twenty-four houses?
Two hundred and twenty-four people, eighty-two houses.
What about the road, they're gonna need a second road.
Well, what's interesting, and I told Charlie this, and a real estate person actually told me. If you go down Glenna, there's a newly paved road that comes off on twenty-nine. So we might be able to route traffic to twenty, to Route twenty on that road. As well as James, you know, coming down to that James River intersection where Nancy is. So there is a secondary road now, and he actually, Charlie says he comes that way now. It's the same amount of time and it's a beautiful road.
Cold, woolly road.
Right?
Cold, woolly road.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Yeah, it's a nice road, it's brand new, so we have two, yeah, so we have two roads in and out. So you go from the forty-five single-family homes at four each is a hundred and eighty people. You go to eighty-two homes in, let's say, a medium density setting to two hundred and twenty-four people, and this is in S, right? Higher density, you could have even seventy-two pocket homes in the front, sixty-four quads in the middle. Fourteen in the back for a total of a hundred and fifty homes, which would add three hundred and ninety-two people at those estimate. So at the highest density, it would almost double the population of it. At a medium density, it would add another fifty percent. To the town's population, or you could keep it at the forty. Forty-five single-family, get a couple hundred people in there. The advantage of something like this is we offer different income. Options to people to live in town. We talked about people aging in place, they're downsizing from larger farms, that they wanna stay in the community. Right now, there's very few properties that allow them to stay, this would allow people to age in place. And Jim, I don't know, and one thing I'd like to follow up with you on is. We talk potentially about having a town tax. Is there a way you can create a special tax district for these new neighborhoods? That have a town tax on a new neighborhood, that we could try a town tax. In a neighborhood that doesn't have residents currently, and as they buy this property. They expect that they're going to have a ten cent per hundred dollar value assessed. Uh, tax on their property.
Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer, uh.
No, I, and I don't think you would.
Normal way is that if you're gonna tax, the government's gonna tax. Uh, real estate is that you have to tax all of real estate and you can't.
Can we look into a special tax district? Could you look into that?
You can create an economic zone if that's what you wanna do. And, and, and tax it that way perhaps, if that's what you're talking about doing. Like what they do for a special shopping center project, that's literally what they did for uh. What's the shopping center outside of Richmond?
A short.
Yeah, that's, that, that project, but uh.
So we could look into the options of maybe creating a special tax district for this new neighborhood. Would bring additional revenue if it's possible. The other thing is, we need people in town. We don't have enough volunteers, we need people to serve on council, we need the people to participate and commit. We need people, we need people to buy things from our businesses. Some growth is necessary to keep the town thriving. So I think if we look at this, not all or nothing, high density or low density. I think we can maybe create some room to add some greater population. Offer greater housing options and potentially certainly. New revenue from just people coming into town and eating at the restaurants and this and that, that won't overwhelm the town. Now, there are a few questions that I think we'll have to answer in that discussion. Um, are there any benefits at the state level to helping address housing issues? There may be benefits at the state level. Uh, we talked, when we talked about, let me just finish again. Uh, when we, uh, the effect on traffic flow, we already talked, there's separate roads now that I think we could manage that, but that should still be looked into.
Traffic study.
The effect on current infrastructure, water, sewer, and that kind of thing. Uh, and then the impact on our police department, I think those are critical questions that need to be answered. But I would really recommend that we seriously consider working more closely with the developer. On a, a different kind. That benefits them and benefits.
My, my own concern, or my concerns for the last project are not similar to this one, I think traffic. Is relatively, you know, it's not, no one's gonna be downtown for their through traffic every day, so that's not a concern. The numbers don't bother me, if you wanna increase numbers, I think we can handle a good amount of it. I think I'm looking at this as kind of our last developmental spot in town.
Yeah.
Like, this will be right.
That's right.
Let's, because. After this, it's gonna be knock something down and build something else. This is raw lands in town, my big concern though, when I talked to Charlie, um. And I really wanted to push a good-sized commercial district up there. Because that way, without having to levy a tax, the town is getting income off of those bringing jobs into the town. I like that idea, again, the numbers aren't. Worrying me too much, is that this little, it's in town, it's a little off the beaten path.
Right.
But, uh, the things I was concerned about. Before are not the same for this one, but I do wanna make sure for putting several hundred people in the town. That we aren't necessarily making taxing revenue off of, that our police force will be able to keep up with that, I think a commercial district will help that.
That's why these questions are really critical, Dan, I'm sorry, you had a point.
No, I was just gonna say, when we had. The thirty-six houses and then when we dealt with the apartments, both from. The private agency, from the county, from the state. There's, we're short, everywhere, short on apartments, short on houses, it's everywhere, so, so the need. It was great in terms of what's there. The economics for the builders is what it's about, in other words, from their end, they have to make the economics work.
Right.
For us, we have a plan and way that the community will support. I will say, I mean, as much as I do favor some of the things you're saying, there was. I mean, if you think of three different areas, we had. Anything over there that I've approached. So I would say this is the hardest area to work on for the town, I mean, in other words, having been what we went through. And I think it's good, I've had conversations with Charlie also, even some recently, I'll just say it that way, and. Um, the point that I will say. There will be a lot of objections, they were there before, and we will have to come up with. A good. Amount of discussion to determine how this will happen, I think for my part. I think some of what's gonna happen is once the, once the thirty-six houses are built and that's all moving along, great. But as that comes in, people will see, they'll either like or don't like, I think they'll like what they see, which will influence people in the future.
Yeah, this is our, and, and I think you're absolutely right, this is our last opportunity. To do something different, to influence the future of the town. And I truly believe we need people right now. And uh, I think this is a compromise, I think there's an opportunity for us here to work with the developer. I think the developer is willing to come to the table, if we do it in a way that's transparent, it's open. We address these critical questions that the town has. I think we can maybe get someplace to the benefit of the town overall. So I'd like you all to consider this, there's a new, there's gonna be new town council coming in, changes. But this is, I think, one of the most critical issues that the council could contribute to.
If you could come up with a concept to do, just, just present that, or, or send it over and we can look at that, it's hard to. Visualize unless you have something else.
Well, I can follow up with Charlie and see.
Then we can look at, see if it's feasible. The message I got from Charlie when I met with him, and I'm sure it was the same for you, which was. Let's all get relatively on the same page.
Right.
Before we get back to them, because it was back and forth last time and kind of. Jumbled up all over the place, so let's, as a council, maybe if we wanna wait till after the election. Wanna wait till and see who the new council is, we get a plan together, and it doesn't have to be, you know, all agreed upon, but as long as we're in the zone. Of being able to bring him in and talk to him, I think that's a wise strategy.
I'll get with you at some point here in a few days and I'll tell you all about the planned development out of here from. From here. Now, it was still similar to what you're saying, you came in, you had apartments, and you had condos, and you had. More condos, and you had cluster homes, and you had single-family homes over here that sold. Two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, and then in the back, you were half million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Which will be double that and that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But at least this gives people a shot with these tiny homes, do you know what I mean? I think, and one of the things that the beauty of Scottsville is the diversity in our communities. Age diversity, all kinds of diversity, you know, and, and I think this will, will help reinforce that. It's a good way to not just say, okay, we have forty-six homes up there that are seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars each, and that's gonna be, right?
Get on there.
All right, something to consider.
So you welcome the suggestion. Um, just wanna take all the B V A thing.
Well, you've.
You need to beat out the B Z.
Yeah, you've had a vac, had one vacancy, and now you have another.
But potential candidate split. One being Stuart, one being Alex.
It's, it's not a hard job, because you never meet, but it, but periodically you do meet.
Okay.
Where you're, where you're required to meet is if the uh zoning administrator makes a determination and the applicant doesn't agree with it one, then his remedy is to appeal it to the B Z A. And there's time deadlines and so forth.
And you have to beat town residents?
As I remember.
I sort of know that we have one case.
I did it too. It's a good place.
And, and you, you need, your process is very simple, that you don't appoint them, the judge of the circuit court appoints them, so it's, you make a recommendation for them. And you, you file a motion, and then you have an order, and she appoints them.
Do they apply? Or do they just write an email or something?
Well, I was, I would, the way I've done it in the past is that you, you essentially uh put their names in a motion and you, when you cover later, you tell the judge a little bit about the individuals' resume, their backgrounds, and then you present the judge with the motion and order, and then it gets signed. But, but it's not something that has a high priority with the circuit court. Uh, it doesn't compare with criminal cases and
Yeah.
and, and more important, civil cases. So it's not something where you submit it, and then the next day it comes back to your side. It's, it can be a, a couple months' process to get it complete.
Questions on B Z A appointments? Go ahead and sign, as long as you've got it.
Well, you've got my epistle, more or less. I hate to write epistles to you. But that was interesting, because that's one that I've been talking about, been dealing with for quite a while, and uh, back in two thousand fifteen, the United States Supreme Court came down with a decision that says that uh political signs are, are, are subject to free, free restrictions, which means that if you're governmental entity, uh, there, there are any regulations you have on them that strictly construed, then you have to show what's called a compelling governmental interest, uh, which is trust me, it's difficult to do. You've really gotta have a compelling governmental interest. What that means is the county's sign ordinance, uh, even though it was in violation of an earlier Virginia statute, which I sent you, which said that you couldn't, you had to sign just like everything else. Uh, what is now unconstitutional, because you can't really put time limits on it. And so, uh, what, what I recommended back in two thousand fifteen, all the attorneys got together when they had this case come down, and then rewrote the kind of the standard model sign ordinance in Virginia. But I don't really think you have to do that. I think your problem in looking at just uh, microscoping in on what your temporary sign requirements are, you talk about epistles, you, you really do have epistles for real estate signs and auction signs and whatever. I think you've got multi-line requirements, and I, I bet you a nickel, nobody ever looks at them or, or enforces them. And so what my recommendation to you in the letter was, that you get rid of your temporary sign restrictions, and you adopt in toto Almar County's very simple, uh, temporary signs not requiring the permit restrictions, uh, which are, one, they have auction signs, two, they have real estate signs, three, they have something else, and then four, they have all other non-commercial signs, and, and then everything comes in under the all other non-commercial signs, including political signs. And uh, everybody's, has irritation when you see these political signs that have been up for not even, not six, not thirty days, but six months, eight months, ten months, you know, whatever. Or permanently, they've become, if it becomes semi-permanent, you can deal with it, but uh, really, you can't really touch political signs because of the heightened scrutiny that they have in the, in, in our court system, so I would love all your uh temporary signs, I would lo- love all your categories for everything other than real estate and auction signs and the other category, I can't think of that now, I can look at it, uh, into this catch-all category that Almar County had. Uh, all other non-commercial, non-commercial signs of whatever nature. And then they're still subject to your, 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 you know, your, your, your size restrictions. So you have some control over what they're doing.
Then all the signs that are beginning and ending.
No, you can't do that.
Can't do at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what you can't do. That's, that's the trouble.
Well, I want things to be able to have something you can say on that.
Well, I'm, I'm just told you what their ordinance is for, for political signs, sir, and it's not, it doesn't have a time deadline.
Well, the one, the one advantage on political signs is twenty-two weeks they won't be around anymore. At least that we.
Wow.
And that's not, that's not actually even a sign, that's a flag, incidentally, and so you'd also have the, adopt Almar County's flag uh uh section. It's, it's very simple, and it would streamline what you have now, which is convoluted at best.
Is there something, Miss, Miss, Mr. Bowling, related to taking them down after the election? Is that some, is there some?
Well, that's where you get in trouble. I mean, if, if I've got a political sign that, from, from, from my, my father who ran for uh whatever, and uh, and I, I'd just like to leave it up, it's now been there for three years, that's not a temporary sign, that's, that's, that's become a permanent sign, so you can do something about that. But I don't think you can have a time limit for political signs that says thirty days after the election, they have to come down. Uh, I think you've gotta uh lump them into the, as a temporary sign, and draw your line between temporary and permanent, whatever that is. And, and define that's not with precision, but with, kinda like, I know it when I see it.
Well, what we could do, Mr. Bowling, isn't this a suggestion? Council Heisen, you might like this, and if we get your address, we could suggest all of our citizens take their use songs to your house.
No, I don't, I'm not following you. I don't want any signs.
I'm just gifting you.
Not another one, I hope the sign that you're about to sit there for eight years, it hasn't come down yet.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've seen those too, and then also, I've seen enormous political signs, you know?
Yeah.
I mean.
Anyhow, we have to, uh, it would be a New Year's Revolution to get our sign ordinance in.
It sounds, it sounds like a dollar in the past, but again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to do the whole sign ordinance, I'd just do the temporary sign part of it for now. Cause I, I was talking to, on the air, I, I think your sign ordinance works pretty good. I mean, it's out of sight and out of mind, and you don't seem to have any of, any glaring signs that I've noticed in town.
Yeah, it's, it's not bad. Uh, okay, let's, uh, on the air, item four A.
Um, so item, um, four A, B, um, is just shared back with you guys. Following last month's uh meeting, I think uh Mr. Heisen had a few minor corrections. Um, just for brevity, cause it's already nine, I don't think there's anything substantial that's changed, but I want to include it as a carry-on item. I might suggest that uh council consider a, a motion on it, if this feels like we've approached, you know, our finalized form on item four A and four B. Um, but that's the short and sweet on that, uh, mayor.
Right, I'm sorry, I missed that, four A and four B, what?
Four A and four B, so the uh volunteer form shorthand, and then the resignation policy.
Well, the, the one, let's say, did you get that email I sent you about the law that was passed in July, I think it was? The state code now lays out, I think it was effective in July, so if Luisa County had uh their mayor resigned unexpectedly, so they now have to appoint an interim. There was a whole article out there about what can be done and how it has to handle, and it's, but it speaks to some of the issues that government services has brought up, so it lays out a process for making interim appointments to a local governing body, elected school board, et cetera. Um, and it tells you, you need forty-five days to appoint a qualified voter. A couple of the changes are, all of the candidates have to have resumes that are publicly available. And I think, once resignation is tendered, it cannot be taken back. So there are a couple of things in that legal provision that just came out, I think in July of this year.
Right, but that's, that's for the, that's for the elected official, okay? We're talking about appointed officials.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Are you sure?
I don't know.
It, no, it, it talks about, I'm familiar with it, it talks about, it talks about resignation of, of what's of gov- government-ended elected official, city council, city council members, town council members.
Right, but not boards?
Not, not, not the architectural review board, that's not.
No, I know that.
And not, not the planning.
The question you have is planning commission, and they're a different entity.
Yeah, I can look at the planning commission, whether they're controlled or not, but I, I think really, they, my, my goodness, is off the top of my head, but my memory was that that change was related to elected officials, which, which we dealt with before, when we've had uh, town council members resigned and had to appoint new town council members. And also tied with that is the election process you have to go through. That is your point until, and you have to get a court order and all this sort of stuff to do it. You look confused, but that's what we brought in your hands.
No, I'm not confused. I think the difference is that now, at least with even elected officials, their resumes have to be made public and things like that.
That's new.
Public has to have comment on that, and I don't think that's been in the past, so we should, I just bring it up, we should.
No, that's a good point.
I don't know if it's for boards or not, or does this? I don't.
Uh, my memory is that it was just for elected officials, yeah.
I haven't put this statute. Yeah, I haven't put this. Okay.
So do we wanna talk about this one next week, or uh, did we make any changes in what's presented tonight? Were you gonna talk about any changes next week?
For the, for, for A and B? Yes, sir. Yeah, look, they, they've been on, well, they've been, the one's been on the docket, so kind of got lost. The rest, but the, the new one with the volunteers, I think that, that's fairly new, but the, that's pretty basic, it's.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think, definitely, I think.
And as long as we aren't conflicting with anything that might be new on the books.
Yeah.
I think we're fine, and so we just need to go over check that.
I will. Then, but the uh, the volunteer form, this is Mr. Heisen reported that, that he needed, good point about not, that you're not, you're gonna get a compensation.
Right.
The, the language in there about um, um, you're not liable. That's probably not worth the paper it's written, it isn't worth the paper it's written off, because if the volunteer does something wrong, um, and, and you're, and you're the governmental entity, you can't say, well, cut it. It says right here that I'm not responsible for anything he does, that's not the way the law works. If you're gonna have volunteer, you're gonna be responsible for them, and that's what you have insurance for, and that's how you deal with that ransom. That makes sense to you? But I think it's an improvement, and it, it kind of regulates your volunteers, and it also gives you a file, so you can appoint, if, if they get injured, you know who to call, and that sort of thing.
Right.
And so forth.
Javier, you wanna talk about the uh policy and procedures of town donations?
To be honest, uh, I include that also, to make sure that we're carrying over items, uh, so they don't get lost. I hadn't had time to talk to Bill in between uh that last government service meeting. Um, I don't think Bill was able to attend it, um, but government service seemed to keep wor, they're working on it. How would you split it up? That division you had, Bill, I think is a pretty reasonable division between what might be prudent for government service to work on, and then decisions for town council.
We're only gonna figure this one out today. But I just kinda wanna go, but I, I talked to this guy, and we got a little sheet out of this, and a moment about how they did it, and, you know, no, nowhere, they're so intricate and, and, and complex, we can't uh do what they do, but he, he gave suggestions, those are the four suggestions for nonprofits. But now they do, uh, they were four million dollars to thirty-nine or forty different uh different uh agencies. And so, that's uh quite a bit different than us giving three thousand. But anyway, they, they, one of the things, uh, the government service, they didn't have this when they, when they went over. This came in later, but the, we, the government service mentioned uh two and three, to have some criteria and have a timeline. Um, the, if we wanna do a strategic plan, we can create one. I just go over the Almar.
We already have one.
No, a strategic plan for donations.
Oh.
Specifically for donations. This is what the, this is what the Almar has. That, that they, to give it to an, an agency, a nonprofit, it has to be addressed either homelessness, adolescent mental health, community safety, or navigation for seniors. It's gotta be one of those things before they, they give any money to it. So we could he, he suggested maybe have some, something like, uh, you know, you know, s- small groups of people to divide it up, you know, that, that benefit the community, anything that's local, but uh, so that would be the, the strategic plan. Uh, so the criteria, the, the government service came up with, and I sent the minutes out about that, and then the timeline, they said, it's probably good to have a timeline to do that, so we're not dragging our feet on that, and uh, and uh, we could give it, but Javier's gonna give us a list of all of nonprofits that are around, and uh, then we can look at that, but we can do this later, uh. But I think the process, the four, four things he mentioned were really good, especially the last one about, uh, you know, reviewing and digesting at the end, to see if this is something we wanna do every year, or if it works, but anyway, that's that's, that's kind of that's kind of the uh, the process. So we could continue with this uh later on, but I think we do need to get going on it, if we wanna do that, and I think the vote first, see if we want, you know, if we can have the money to, to give to nonprofits, you know, that's, that's the key thing. You know.
I think uh, it was to avoid pass confrontations to say, we've designed a form that says the name, the, the name of the group, uh, what, what, like a grant, right?
Yeah.
So I'll see, question, ask question, what do you, what have you done for the community? What do you plan to do for the community, and why are you doing it for the community? We got a closed session, we talked about all of it, and we, if a sound, it's like we, just like we did citizen year.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's, I didn't wanna make it too, I thought they did wanna make it too complicated, so you know, they could just, it could just be an email, and somebody says, you know, a small a- agency could say, you know.
Form, or any, any applicant should fill out, so they all have the same question, and we can sit in a closed session, and discuss it, and so they can.
Well, and if you wanted to, if you, if you did, certain things are contentious, you can do what we do for the higher, you can have a criteria.
Yeah.
And score them on a one to five.
Yeah.
With these ten criteria, and whoever comes out the highest, the top three, that's who the town gives money to. And that's a fairly simple process.
And we have to make sure we get it out to those, but I think we do need to get more involved in nonprofits. Yes. Yeah.
Well, the nonprofits should all get a letter from the town, right?
Yeah.
Typically deal with to say, we're going through a new process, you know, here's where it crosses this, here's the form, here's the timeline, apply, and you will be considered for town funding.
Yeah. Maybe it's one to a couple hundred dollars, I think.
So they all get to apply, and the town gets to award, however much.
Well, but as far as, what do you think about having a, a strategic plan or a, or what's on it? Quite good, just open it up, anyway, any, any nonprofit, I'm sure.
Any topic that would have strategic priorities.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have four priorities that you, that if you align to one or more of these, you'll be considered higher. That's all. Easy.
Any other business?
I do think we need to start looking, oh, you mean, you're, you think we need to start with budgets in the next month or two, because they kind of, they're ahead of it this time, so we're not.
I asked, we do, we don't, Jerry, where's?
And I, and I think we'd be good to have a, a, a process, like, you start the budget this time, we do it this, this, you know, kind of a schedule that throughout the year, so we're, we're not felt, oh, suddenly it's like, okay, we gotta do the budget, and it's, it's made out, and that's what's going on. So maybe you should, maybe that'll carry over.
Usually, we, we used to uh drive sort of budget talks and gang wherever, around March, you didn't do a hot and dead. Usually, we, we used to uh drive sort of budget talks and gang wherever, on march, we didn't do a lot of that.
Yeah. It would be good, because then elections are over, your new people are in their seats. And and just, I think we really need to do a good job about briefing those incoming people on what the expectations are.
Yeah.
Well, and they have ethics training to go through, they have all of this stuff, they need to be made aware, yeah, yeah.
A lot of them.
Freedom of information, all kinds of stuff.
Have you designated a date for the annual meeting?
That's usually in there, isn't it, I thought it was January?
January, we don't have a day.
Last year we had, they walked because we, we had so much going on, I think it was a comprehensive.
I think it's a good idea to get it on the calendar now, and when we're moving into holiday season, everybody's gonna be consumed with that, so. Probably good, just get it on the calendar.
Javier, put the, put, put the annual meeting and for the January council meeting.
And the budget, we ought to have a, an annual start, dead heart call for everything.
Well, and you know, I think might be helpful in your discussions about budget, is to have some kind of. Focus, point or direction, because you know, Eddie commented to me when he said about. You know, we talk about new things, we shouldn't prioritize in old things, if you think about like, sort of the three-year vision, where maybe we need to spend. The next year into just getting some of our infrastructure and local stuff up to snuff, right, and can. And deemphasize some of the other stuff, then the next year you add a little bit back in, and then by year three, hopefully, you're more covered. But something like that, some guiding principles about how we wanna work the budget, might be helpful in the discussions for budget next year. Just my two cents.
And thanks for the home.
Our house.
Alright, well, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Welcome, yeah.
I think it's good to run, I'm going.
It's just, it's just like.
I didn't give anything with a policy that overrode the state in our code.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and not only, people haven't realized, they're friends, and they will have to be made available and published.
What's wrong with that?
Well, it's not wrong with that, but I don't think it would be that. It would make it helpful to the people, not to the general.
But this is a, this is a new, foreign, this could have been one minute set there.
I know, but I don't know that if we had that situation today, that people would be aware that it's a lot broader process than.
Well, they are now, cuz I've extended our.
Yes, okay, alright, well, that's good, cuz I didn't know about that, so I was like.
I knew about it, I just, you know, I don't pay any attention to it, I'm feeling somebody was always got a public spy.
Yeah, well, and people incoming have to know that their information, whatever they provide, is going to be public.
Well, that's true.
Hey, Jim, go back to the, the.
Good night, buddy.
The sign order should, should be right with that, okay? Alright.
No, you, you need anything, you need help?
No, I think I'm good, I gotta figure out how to shut this down.
You've been abandoned, huh? Didn't you just X out everything?
No. They have to.
Ten meetings for all, there you go.